I call this meeting to order. Please stand and turn off your electronic devices so we can conduct our business. And Councilmember Vili will give the pledge allegiance and invocation.
Thank you, Council President. Please join us in our Lord's Prayer followed by the pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Want to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to deviate a little bit from the agenda. Normally, we go into public comments, but we have several proclamations to give. So if we will call up Shelley Stein.
Good evening and thank you. I am joined this evening by our city representatives, legislator Clattenburg, legislator Meha, and legislator Delio, and Rosemary. This commendation starts out as this. Whereas Rosemary Christian has served the city of Batavia as sixth ward council member since 1992, just over 29 years. And assisting constituents has always been a priority to Mary Rose. While not stopping with the sixth ward, she's always made herself available to all of the citizens throughout the city of Batavia. And whereas Mary Rose was an advocate for saving dollars when it came to budget decisions, always making sure purchases were in the best interests of the citizens of Batavia. And whereas Mary Rose supported many -- I did that wrong again. Rosemary supported --
I didn't even begin.
After 29 years, I didn't even realize it.
I thought you were at the wrong meeting.
Rosemary supported many ideas that constituents came forward with. She made sure that their ideas were heard and addressed. Therefore, be it resolved that the Genesee County Legislature does hereby commend and congratulate Mary Rose Christian for her steadfast -- Oh, my God, I did it again. Rosemary Christian. It's really written here correctly. For her steadfast devotion and loyalty to the citizens of the city of Batavia. And I just greatly apologize. Therefore, be it resolved that heartfelt wishes are extended to Rosemary for many years of happy and healthy retirement. On behalf of the Genesee County Legislature, myself, and also attested to by Mary Ann Clattenburg, our vice chair, congratulations. And I do apologize. I'm going to turn this over to you.
Well, Mary Rose, she wants me to say a few words. I just want to congratulate Rosemary. And I did put this in the record on the floor of the legislature this evening. It's been a privilege to know you, to serve with you, and to see your tireless work. Growing up, Rosemary was my councilperson because I lived on Swan Street in the South Side. So, you know, there was always talk, "Call Rosemary, call Rosemary," amongst all the neighbors. And people did, and she did get results. So I can't thank you enough for your tireless work on behalf of the city of Batavia. And I wish you all the best in your much deserved retirement. Thank you.
And next up, we have a someone named Holly, please.
Does that work? It does. Mary Rose. I've known Ro for more than the 29 years that she's served on this council, although I can't remember back farther than 20. I can't remember a time when Rosemary, or Mary Rose, was not on council. It's just 29 years flies by like it was yesterday. I can remember serving on the county legislature with a good friend of hers and eventually a very good friend of mine, county legislator Florence Joya. And both of them have very similar ideas and approaches to representing people's interests. How's that? Right off the top of my head.
Very good.
They believe in folks. They believe in their neighbors. They believe that anyone's issue ought to be taken care of regardless of where they live, where they come from, whether a Republican, a Democrat. And both Florence and Rosemary have represented their people in that manner. And that's something that is sometimes sorely missed, no matter where it is. All of us should aspire to do that. And I admire Rosemary for how she's represented her people. And as someone said just a moment ago, Clattenburg over here said, when she lived on Swan Street over there on the South Side, said, "Everybody said if you got an issue, call Rosemary." Well, that says it all, doesn't it? I mean, you just really have done an unbelievably great job. She'll be back again, maybe not on city council, but somewhere doing something for the community because that's the kind of individual she is. I consider it a great honor to have known her all these years, to respect her and to be able to call her a good friend of mine. And I have a citation which pretty much says very similar things to what the county legislature has done. But I'll read the last couple of whereas's. Whereas with a steadfast and unwavering commitment, Rosemary has made her mark as an active member in the community, working with the city of Batavia council. And whereas for nearly three decades, Rosemary Christian rendered faithful, conscientious, and valuable service to the city of Batavia, truly earning the admiration, esteem, and affection of her colleagues and the residents. Now therefore be it resolved that if someone's Steve Hawley, that's me, Rosemary, along with the citizens of the 139th Assembly District, offers praise, congratulations, and especially thanks to Rosemary Christian as she celebrates her retirement after 29 years of dedication to the city of Batavia and its residents. November 22nd, 2021. Congratulations, my friend.
And next, we're going to present one from city council.
Whereas Rosemary Christian, council member of the city of Batavia, city council, retired her elected seat on November 15, 2021, after nearly 30 years of service to the city and the sixth ward. And whereas upon her election in November 1991, Rosemary took office on January 1, 1992, and quickly became a staunch advocate for the citizens and businesses within the sixth ward lobbying for resources and services. And whereas Rosemary, a lifelong resident of Batavia, has brought passion, energy, and a South Side can-do neighborhood approach to her constituents in the sixth ward, the city council, and the employees of the city of Batavia. And whereas Rosemary, an advocate of emergency services and emergency personnel, truly believes in a neighbor-helping-neighbor philosophy of city life, seeking to ensure that residents and government remain connected and working together. And whereas during her tenure as council member, Rosemary was a true public servant, winning the support of her ward in eight consecutive elections, advocating for residents and neighborhoods, and always having the best interests of the city of Batavia at heart. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Batavia does hereby congratulate Rosemary Christian, city of Batavia council member, on her retirement and wish her and her family good health and happiness for years to come.
I didn't think you were going to ask me, Gino, if I had something to say. And of course, you all know I do. There you go. First of all, I want to thank my daughter, Eileen, my grandson Cory, his girlfriend, Sarah, my daughter, Raylene. My daughter, Madeline, had to leave early. My daughter, Justine, lived in New Hampshire, so she couldn't make it. I didn't want her to take this drive again. But anyways, Raylene has always been with me. She has always helped me with my petitions, with my signs, with everything. And I call her my guardian angel. I want to thank the people of the sixth ward. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve them 29 and a half years. A thank you goes out to my colleagues for the party. It's been a privilege to serve with all of you. My personal thoughts are to have a new police department in 2022. The men and women in this department risk their lives every day. New members need to have a higher salary to get the best people here. I want to thank the men and women in the fire department for all the work they do. And they also risk their lives trying to save someone else. I also want to thank the men of the DPW. They take care of our parks, the snow, the water main breaks. When they need to, they need to work, they need to work in all kinds of weather. I also want to thank the inspection department because they have always been there for me. I think everybody has my phone number on speed dial. I'm not for sure. I also want to thank the administration in our city because they have our city in good working condition. Rachel's going to do a great job. As for my colleagues, I respect each and every one of you and wish you all well. Please, please defend the Constitution, especially freedom of speech and the right to bear arms. Bob and Al, thank you very much for serving our country. And thank you. Have a good night.
This next proclamation is for Larry Friedman, our retiring district attorney. Larry Friedman is being recognized for his 40 years of dedicated service to the residents of the city of Batavia. Larry began his career as the district attorney's office in 1980 as assistant district attorney and was appointed for the office of district attorney in 1997 by Governor George Pataki to fill a vacant seat created by the election of then DA Robert Newman to the county judge position. Larry went on to run for six consecutive four-year terms, all as an unopposed candidate. District Attorney Friedman prosecuted countless felony and misdemeanor crimes, including having argued 140 felony trials. Larry successfully prosecuted many high-profile city cases, including homicide, arson, vehicle manslaughter, and many others. Larry's acumen as a trial attorney helped bring about justice for countless crime victims and helped to fortify the integrity of the DA's office. Larry served the citizens of the city of Batavia and the residents of Genesee County with expertise and a commitment to improve the safety, healing, and access to justice for all. Therefore, in true spirit of appreciation, for 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Batavia and Genesee County, the city council of the city of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Larry Friedman for his dedicated service to our community and to wish him well in his retirement. Congratulations.
Yeah, I've been in the DA's office so long that when I started, Gino Jankowski was a young patrolman, and we both had a full head of hair.
That's a long time.
And Gary Meha was chief deputy at the sheriff's office. So first of all, I want everyone to know that this truly does mean a great deal to me. I've been prosecuting the felonies in the city of Batavia for the last 34 of my 40 years with the office. And we've had a good working relationship for about 30 years with city council where we've had a shared services agreement. And I appreciate your support in that. And we've worked well with Rachel and her predecessors and with George Van Ness all along. And I've had what I believe is a great working relationship with the city of Batavia Police Department. And I've worked probably the most with the detective bureau and, as was mentioned, prosecuted many felony cases arising out of the city of Batavia. And every time I've had one that went to trial, I knew I could look to members of the Batavia Police Department Detective Bureau to give me the assistance I needed in doing the things that need to be done right up until the time of and even during trial, as recently as last week, when Detective Matt Loytazak testified at what was my last trial, hard to believe, the final trial of my career, an attempted murder case shooting here in the city of Batavia. Detective Eric Hill worked on that along with Detective Sergeant Matt Loogie. And I have always appreciated that support that we get from them. It's because of the great job that they do that I've been able to do what I do. And I'm grateful to my staff members. I'm kind of sorry that they have nothing better to do on Monday night. A number of people from my staff are here. And Rosemary just told me that her son, her grandson, excuse me, just graduated from law school and is taking the New York bar exam, I believe, in February. So I told, I gave her my card and wrote Kevin Fennell's name on my success. Over to heaven, send a resume to Kevin Rose looking for good people. So again, thank you very much. Thank you for those of you who are here to support me as opposed to just having the cookies and coffee. Rosemary, I really do appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Public comments? Communications? I mean, I didn't see you, but I know. You've been out of town for 40. The next city council conference and business meeting will be held on Monday, December 13, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. First up is the schedule of 2022 council meetings. You see that in your packet?
Thank you, Council President. Attached is the 2022 council meeting schedule for your review. Of note --
Wait till I just hold up a minute.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Of note, the three returning council members will need to be sworn in before December 31st, but after what date? Heidi Parker?
December 28.
In between the days of September 28th and December 28th and December 31st. The three council members will need to be sworn in in Heidi's office.
Before the 1st of January.
And then we'll do a ceremonial swearing in at the first meeting, which is on the 10th of December, I believe.
Got it.
Which will also constitute the organizational meeting for council as well.
Right. The first half of the meeting is organizational, and then we'll go into the regular meeting.
I think it's two separate meetings, but yes.
They'll be like back to back.
Correct.
Anyone have any concerns on the scheduling?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, Paul. Should we switch that one?
So that's, are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting to get ratified there? So that goes. Bond authorization for Harvester Richmond Street improvements?
Thank you, Council President. The resolution before you is seeking council's approval for short-term borrowing to complete the Richmond and Harvester Street projects. The request to borrow is 3.6 million. This is an increase in project amount of 1.6 million from the original project of 2.04. I'm going to have Ray come up and speak about the reason why the increase occurred as they went into engineering. But I just want to note that 80% of the project cost is grant-funded through Transportation Improvement Program. The other 20% will come from other highway funds or Marchesele funds.
There's a significant scope change. Good evening, city council. Start off that way. I think pictures will kind of explain what we're going through out there. The portion of Harvest Avenue, south of Colorado Avenue, is is insignificant road. It was asphalt put basically on native soils. We did not know that until such time that we did the cores. First two pictures that are going through are the cores from that section. The third picture, which is following up behind, will show you what the rest of the road is made out of. It has a concrete base. This was a road rehabilitation project. Basically, we were going to take the asphalt off of the road and rebuild on top of the concrete. We do not have that option on that lower third. And that's where the material changes, where the scope changes. Basically, that is going to be reconstructed. So it's a complete boxout, new curves.
For the whole length or just from?
Just for that third. That's just to give you magnitude how expensive road building is.
So is that why you think it's so rough now in that section? Because that seems to be one of the rougher parts, too. With all that truck traffic, was that adequate to hold that weight?
In theory, no. It has done better than I think any of us thought. That's why we were very surprised with it. In my 23 years here, we've never opened that portion for a utility cut. It always just dumb luck I've gotten to dig the other sections of Harvester. So it was a complete surprise when we went out and did the borings on it.
Any questions for Ray?
Ray, what was the base material under the blacktop? What was the soil conditions under it?
Under the blacktop? It's a silty gravel, a lot of organic in it. Tend to think it was a native material that was used around here, but not what you would consider a substantial base for an industrial loaded road.
Must have been really compacted, though.
That's amazing. So now you talk in here about the additional funding?
Correct.
Grants and stuff?
Yep, so we're asking for an increase in the tip funding from the Genesee Transportation Council, which they have under review at this time. And then we have other opportunities potentially for Marchesele funds or our highway aid funds to make up the match if the Marchesele is not reauthorized by the state legislature.
We are looking at keeping it on schedule, that it would be this upcoming construction season project.
So it's spring of 2022?
Correct.
Yeah, because it's in dire need. Any other questions for Ray? Or the city manager? Okay, thank you, Ray. So are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting, the future business meeting? Okay. The next one is the architect services for the new police facility?
Thank you, Council President. Before you have a bond authorization for design, engineering, and architecture services for the new police facility, the resolution will authorize the city to utilize borrowing, specifically a bond anticipation note, to complete the design and engineering work for construction of the new police station at Bank and Elva. The ban allows this portion of work to get started without payment for one year. Once the final construction cost is known, the city would then look to issue a general obligation bond for 30 years on the entire project. Current estimates in the midst of our inflationary economy and COVID supply chain predict the building cost to be 10.8 million. Once we go through design and engineering, we'll have a much better sense of what that cost will be. With the city's level debt policy, I'm confident that the city can absorb the needed annual debt payments for the 30-year obligation bond into the future. The ban before you tonight is for 1.5 million to pay for the architecture and design services at this time. We don't want to borrow more than we need or pay interest on what we don't need until we're ready to go to construction. So I would recommend that city council move this resolution forward.
Any questions?
Is that 1.5 included in the 10.8 mil?
That's correct, yes. Yep, and we're still working off the estimates that Ken Pearl presented to you back in September in that presentation. And so far, we've been interviewing architecture and engineering firms, and the pricing has come back relatively similar to his workup. It's just the construction cost that'll be unknown at this time. Things are changing every day, all day. But as we get into design and engineering of the facility, we'll know a lot more.
Anything else? So is this going to be a similar process where as things are needed, we will bond and then bond and then eventually bond the whole thing, so it's 10 million? Or is this the first one and then the whole thing?
The first one and then the whole thing. So a year from now or less, we will bond for construction of the building once we know that price.
And roll this one into that one, so it's one bond at the end?
That's correct. Yep. These costs can be added to the overall bond for the project.
Makes sense not to pay interest on the full amount until we actually are in the construction phase.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, good. So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting, correct?
That does not move to tonight. That will go to December 13th.
I know there was supposed to be asterisks on here. That was moved over, and I don't see them. Which one are? Just let me know when we get to one that's going to be moved to tonight.
Yep, starting with rezoning at the bottom.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
So that moves. The next one is the Architect Unlimited contract for the new police facility?
Yep, so before you, councilmembers, you have a contract with Architecture Unlimited for project management or owners' representation services related to the police facility. This is the first contract of many that you will look at for the police facility. The next one will be the design and engineering. But this would have Ken Pearl of Architects Unlimited acting as our owners' representative for the length of the project. He would provide quality control services, budget services, design management services, construction management services. He's a licensed architect and forensic architect. He would act as the city's representative through the design process and through the entire construction of the project. He's worked with the city on numerous other projects, including Mall Roof 1, Mall Roof 2, and the new police station roof project, which hasn't begun yet. If you'll remember, completed the feasibility study for the site at Bank and Elva, and I'm confident he can help the city deliver the project on time and on budget. The cost of the contract for the life of the project, which is a three, three-and-a-half year project, is $370,000.
Any questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, that moves forward. Surplus of a police car.
I think so.
We're good.
All set? Thank you, councilmembers. So for the
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm here for the next one.
So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that moves. And next one?
Rachel just stepped out, so I think she was going to introduce her.
Right there. The equipment, emergency equipment.
Oh, thank you. Before you, council, you have an amendment to the budget to recognize VLT revenue and purchase equipment for emergency personnel. As you are aware, at the 11th hour of the New York State Legislature's budget that passed this year in 2021, VLT aid was restored with the help of Assemblyman Hawley and Senator Rath. This is windfall fund, so it's not something we can use on operations, and typically, we wouldn't use it during the year. However, because our budget this year in '21-'22 had so many cuts in it with the unknown revenue scenarios, I had worked with the police chief and the fire chief early on to say, if we do have VLT money, let's look at it partway through the year if we're doing well, to apply it to some purchasing. So there is some equipment that both the police department and the fire department need. And at this time, Sean, if you want to talk about yours, and Dan can come up as well.
So currently, the police department's in need of replacing all of our mobile data terminals, which are the computers that are inside our police cars. It's the working office for all of our police officers. The computers that are being replaced are not like your general laptops. They have to be able to operate in all types of environments, cold, hot, wet, you know, you name it. So they are more expensive than the average laptop. We are currently looking at replacing eight of them. We do have a fleet of 10 vehicles. One was replaced recently, as it was an additional canine vehicle, so that is a new computer in there. And we are going to be removing a computer from our SRO's vehicle because there's no need for a computer in that vehicle. So we are actually downsizing our fleet a little bit when it comes to the computers. But in order to keep up with technology, we're looking to expend about $55,000 to purchase those and necessary installation equipment as well.
Any questions?
Absolutely.
If anything that our first responders need, we need to make sure that they keep the city safe, so you have my support.
Thank you.
I mean, this is even more important because they're documenting. This stuff might end up in court, and what they do at the scene when it's fresh is even more important than hours later back at headquarters or whatever, right? So very important piece of equipment.
Question, Sean, will this cover installation costs also?
Yes. Yep, installation cost is covered as well. And the other half of that grant, which is something that the fire department and I share, is portable radio replacements. So in 2014, Genesee County put up a new radio system, a Harris radio system, and at that time, all of the radios were purchased under a large grant underneath the county's umbrella. And each agency was given basically one-for-one radios. If we had a portable, we turned in a portable; a mobile, we turned in a mobile. Since then, we've made no, we haven't had the opportunity to change out some of those machines or those radios. And again, along with the computers, they're in all types of environment, 24/7. They got to be relied upon to reach dispatch, and those costs are going up, you know. So right now, you're looking at around $3,3250 for one portable radio, so the radio that these guys and gals carry on their hips every day. So with this funds, we're looking to replace about 13 of them, I believe. And I think Fire is looking to replace a few as well.
Any questions on that? And they take a lot of abuse. I mean, you're rolling around in the street, and the radio's getting banged around.
A lot of abuse, yep.
Yeah, take a lot of abuse.
I'd just like to add that we'll be looking at other opportunities to partner with the county for any type of grant funds for these radios, because if you look at how many we have left to replace, 21 portable, 25 mobile for the police department, 41 portable, and 10 more mobile for the fire department, that's a lot of funds, and it's something that we should be able to try to do within a very short time period, so they're all on the same systems with the same. They have to be.
Different models with different parts and different repair problems, yes.
I think this will be with the police chief and fire chief, one of the things they're working very hard on for grant funding on this, and then to look at any other funds that might come through with the help of, I know Congressman Jacobs has been very helpful sending grants our way since he came to visit the city, so we will be continuing to look for that.
And now the other half for the fire department?
The other half? Good evening. Our portion of the grant is to replace bailout systems for our firefighters. What that is, is a, it's a 50-foot piece of rope. It has a hook and a friction device to control the descent in case you have to, say, bail out of a building due to fire conditions that are rapidly deteriorating. This is mandated by state law. That was from 2006, I believe it was. So each firefighter's issued one, and then they're on a 10-year replacement. Any type of structural protective equipment that we either wear or use is pretty much on a 10-year replacement, meaning that we have to replace it in 10 years because the standard says so. So that cost to outfit everybody is, forgive me, I don't know the exact, it was around 15,000. The other portion of that is fire helmets. Again, it's on a 10-year replacement, just because the standard says so, that they're made of plastic, so they do degrade in sunlight and whatnot, so it's a pretty important part of our equipment, and that is 14,000 and change to outfit all the firefighters.
Any questions on that? So you don't have any of the old leather helmets kicking around?
There's a few of us that wear leather.
I know that was the thing back in the day.
Leather helmets are good.
And then you're going to be involved with the portable radio part of it, too, then?
Correct, yep, yep.
So any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So are we in consensus to move the purchase of equipment to the next business meeting?
Yes.
See if that gets moved. The Elka Trail easement?
Thank you, Council President. The final easement that we are looking to take over from the town of Batavia in relationship to Elka Trail runs along, it used to be Graham's property or the Creek Park property, in fact, it was where they had the ribbon cutting near the bridge. This easement was the final one that the city has agreed to take over initially when we started this project. We just got all the paperwork over from their attorney and asking council to move this forward to the next business meeting to take the easement and to maintain those portions of the trail.
Any questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? That gets moved. The BOA pre-development services contract?
Before you, you have a contract with Lobella and Associates. They were selected by a group of staff members after review of a contract, RFP, to do BOA pre-development grant services. This, as councilor members, in 1415, when Jason Molino was here, you entered into the brownfield opportunity area program. There's a lot of studies done. Multiple sites were identified as brownfields or underutilized sites to move forward. The state legislature decided to take that program and make a Phase II of that, and this is what this is, pre-development services for sites. In this category, we were awarded a grant two years ago, but with COVID, it kind of slowed down the progression of getting the grant in place with Department of State and moving it forward. But the funding will be used for activities at city center and the entire campus, so in relationship to where the new police facility will go and the million-dollar mall project that is, RFPs are just coming in for that right now. This will help us do some of the work there, including environmental impact statements, looking at all the parking opportunities, planning, and then furthermore, at the end of it, I hope to have a more informed perspective of what we can do with the properties we own inside city center as well as the concourse. It also has some funding in it for the Harvester campus. We applied for this one. Tom Mancuso was the owner of Harvester. We have not reached out to the new owner yet in relationship to these grant activities, but we'll do so as we move forward in the process. So I recommend that council approve the contract with Lobella to get this process started.
Any questions? So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. The reclassification of the human resource position?
Thank you. For several years, the duties, expectations, and responsibilities of the human resource specialists have grown in terms of directing, planning, maintaining all human resource functions of the city. The human resource specialist is responsible to manage all personnel budgets across the city. The hiring process for all new employees, has an in-depth knowledge of all union contracts, performs extensive compilation of financial data for the annual audit, administers the work for compensation program, workers' compensation program, and the city's self-funded healthcare. Furthermore, this position assists the city manager in negotiations of labor contracts, compiling cost analysis for the economic impact of union proposals, oversees and investigates personnel-related charges and complaints, ensures compliance with civil service as it relates to current personnel, new employees. After review of this job and looking at it with civil service at the county, the work that the human resource specialist is doing is more aligned with a human resource director, and I recommend that the city council recognize this and change the position of human resource specialist to human resource director.
Yeah, what'll be the effective date of that?
The effective date would be, so if you took it to the December 13th meeting, it could be effective December 13th.
Any other questions? I think this is a really good thing. I mean, I've seen it over the years, this position grow into, you know, as requirements and state requirements and all kinds of things, it's really become a lot of work. And I think this is a long time in coming, and I thank Dawn for toughing through and basically pioneering through all those years. So it's a good thing that we should get this fixed up and cleaned up.
And I will say, with civil service, it's kind of a joke. I go in, can we do this? No. Can we do this? No. Can we do that? No. And there are, there's rules and requirements in civil service that make hiring just a little bit more difficult than it would be certainly in the private sector. But Dawn has been an exceptional student in understanding that and getting and gaining all of the knowledge, and I personally like to thank her. She made my first year as interim manager and now as manager much easier.
Right, and in case, anytime there's a problem, I mean, it's important to handle it properly for both sides of the argument, so it's a very important position. So is this going to be a civil service-tested position?
We do not believe it will be. We think it'll be an exempt position.
So we'll have Dawn see. As it is right now, it would be competitive, but Genesee County has, I think, going to solicit to New York State that it be not competitive. We just don't know what the outcome of that's going to be until it goes through the state level.
So we'll be able to hire a person to fit that slot and not be limited by only two or three names at the top of a list somewhere?
If New York State Civil Service agrees with that.
Right, so it's still kind of a work in progress at this point at that part.
Not for several months.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Dawn. Are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. Now, this one will be moved to tonight's special business meeting. The rezoning of 145 and 147 Pearl Street, referral to the city planning and development.
Good evening. So what you have before you is a proposed rezoning of 145 and 147 Pearl Street. The property owner at 147, rather, came to the inspections office and wanted to put a shed on his property. Unfortunately, he's in a planned development zoning district, which basically says no residential properties. He's a non-conforming use. In zoning speak, non-conforming uses can't get bigger, they can't grow, they can only remain. So to remain as a planned development district, he can do nothing to his property. So we looked at the surrounding properties. We noticed that another residential property was also in the same situation, and we're proposing to rezone both of those.
And then I see the property next to it, that's like a car repair place or something?
Correct, and that one's not proposed to be part of this rezoning.
That's not a resident, residence. Any question? Go ahead.
I just want to thank our assistant city manager, because the gentleman called me and was very upset and didn't know what to do. He said, I just want to put a shed on my property. So I immediately called her, and she responded very quickly to him and got this all working. I really appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
And the contract with the survey firm, Bank and Alva Place New Police Facility. That also gets moved to tonight's business meeting.
It does. So before you, you have a contract for $3,250 for specifically land survey work that will provide us with a description, zoning, right-of-way, elevations, location size and depth of water, sewer, and gas and other utilities on the site at Bank and Alva. This was not part of the RFP we put out for architects and engineers, so we'd like to have this done before we move into contract with an architecture engineering firm. So all the conditions on the site are known, and a full survey and description is complete. We did an RFP, and WM Schott and Associates was the lowest bidder for the work.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Biakowski, seconded by Mr. Veely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Okay, I now call to order the special business meeting. I'll assign the agenda items. Item 90, 2021, resolution to enter into an agreement with William Schutt for land survey for the Bank and Alva Police Station property, Mr. Veely. 91, 2021, resolution for the collective bargaining agreement with CSCA, Mr. Veely. And 92, 2021, the petition to rezone 145 and 147 Pearl, Ms. Briggs.
longevity increase of $100 at the 20-year point for individuals that reach the 20-year mark here with the city, limit of carryover of vacation to one week, however, adding in the option to cash in sick time, increase in healthcare contributions by 3% over the term of the contract, and lastly, the removal of the financial clerk typist from the union. The position will now be a non-union employee. For every year of the contract, this is an approximate budget impact to the city of $34,500. I recommend that the city council move this to tonight's business meeting and ratify the CSEA contract.
Any questions, concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Motion to adjourn. Byakowski, seconded by Mr. Veely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Okay, I now call to order the special business meeting. I'll assign the agenda items. Item 90, 2021, resolution to enter into an agreement with William Shot for land survey for the Bank and Elva Police Station property. Mr. Veely? 91, 2021, resolution for the collective bargaining agreement with CSEA. Mr. Veely? And 92, 2021, the petition to rezone 145 and 147 Pearl. Ms. Briggs? Mr. Veely, if you want to start out?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution entering an agreement with William Shot for land survey service for Bank and Elva.
Seconded by Mr. Karaz. Any other questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes. And if you want to take the second one there, Mr. Veely?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the collective bargain agreement with the Civil Service Employees Association, CSEA.
Seconded by Mr. Karaz. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes. And 91, 2021, Ms. Briggs?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution referring the petition to rezone 145 and 147 Pearl Street to the Planning and Development Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Byakowski. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Who would like to take us into executive session? Mr. Veely, if you want to read?
Whereas Article 7, Section 95, one each of the public officer's law permits a legislative body of a municipality to enter into the study session to discuss the proposed and provisioned sale of real property or the proposed division of securities for sale or exchange of securities held by such public body but only when this deed was properly affected by thereof, now therefore being resolved by the city, by the council, city of the union,